Before we started two meetings this afternoon, I'd like to make an introduction and welcome our newest board member, Commissioner Reverend Ricky Parks. And we're gonna have a reversal. We usually have our annual meeting first and our regular meeting second, but we're gonna change it around today because we have some people who need to get on the plane and head home. So, we're going to start with our regular meeting. But at this time, I'd like to call the order. The Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for September 26, 2019, at a time that's a little after 3:00. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Chinowith.
Present.
Commissioner Turnbull. Commissioner Obachowski.
Present.
Commissioner Henry.
Here.
Commissioner Deere.
Here.
Commissioner Rose.
Here.
Commissioner Parks.
Here.
Next item on the agenda, approval of the agenda. I need a motion for approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Start him.
Your call.
Commissioner Chinowith.
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull. Commissioner Obachowski.
Yes.
Commissioner Henry.
Yes.
Commissioner Deere.
Yes.
Commissioner Rose.
Yes.
Commissioner Parks.
Yes.
Next item, we have public comments on agenda items only. Any public comments on the agenda items? Seeing none? Next item is the Bristol Park.
I'm sorry.
Okay. It's not the same as one I have. Okay, let me see that for a second. Next item is presentation of the 2018 fiscal year audit by Miletta &amp; Company.
So I just wanted to introduce them. So Jason Gill and Michelle Spiteri from Miletta &amp; Company, they've been doing our fiscal year audit for several years now, so they're presenting the 2018 audit.
It's good to be here. I know you guys have an exciting day here, and while I think accounting's as exciting as it could possibly get, I know I'm kind of a minority here, so I'll try to keep it as fast as I can without, you know, losing you or boring you at the same time. So we'll start with, you had a good year. A lot of things happening. Obviously, you had the developments, and on a financial note, we'll try to tie those all in. So basically, the results of your audit. We're tasked to audit your financial statements and issue opinion on compliance with your programs. That's what we're hired and required to do. So it's a two-pronged approach. And the first section there, this kind of summarizes the results. They're on your financial statements. It's an unmodified opinion, meaning it's clean, you have no internal control issues. We found no deficiencies significant to mention to the board. And part of what we look at is we make sure that, you know, what you're getting as a board should coincide with what we're seeing at the audit at the end of the year. If not, we would, you know, we would deem that a deficiency, and there's nothing of that note. So you see all the X's in the "no" column, that's a good thing. Second section there, the federal awards, is part of our other, part of the audit requirement, is we're testing compliance with the provisions of the programs you run. We go through there, there is a mark under the "yes" that does say there are significant deficiencies identified, and an audit finding that is required to be reported. We'll go into those next, but basically still, it's an unmodified opinion, meaning you complied with the programs you're tasked to comply with. And the main program that we tested was, again, who you are, the Move to Work program. Just to kind of put that in perspective, the next page here is the statement of federal awards. Basically, you're a $21.5 million year, this year, organization in federal awards. 99.9% of that was the Move to Work program, and we're testing that. You have some ancillary programs up top. I just want to put in perspective as far as the work involved and what we're focusing our talk on here today. So on the next page here is, we have, and I mentioned, findings. So there are two findings noted this year. The first one involves eligibility, so as part of the process, we're looking at tenant files, making sure you're calculating rents correctly, things of that nature. And we found some instances similar to the previous year, but certainly, the big difference here is by the time we got to it and we looked at it, staff had already corrected all the issues that we found. So basically, the period of performance, the period, the year at hand that we audited, did have some carryover in some of the issues that we had talked about in the past. But the staff had already corrected it even before we got to it. But you can't change the past. You know, we were tasked to look at it, we saw it, we're reporting it here today. For the most part, it's just that you were late with recertifying tenants. You're required to recertify annually. You were late on a couple of those, so you got dinged on that. So a minor thing, and certainly, it appears that you're right at the cusp of, you know, completing that part of it, which is important, but nevertheless, I think, satisfied. Next finding, it's a new finding this year, it's based on reporting. A lot of your year-end reporting was late this year, later than it's really ever been. So our initial concern was as to the cause. Here, it appears to be just, I mean, some of it's a timing, you had a lot of things going on, a lot of good things. A lot of that stuff happened in December, so that, you know, effective, the year-end close delayed some of the things, transferred to a new office here on the same time period. Obviously, had a negative impact, but as we looked at it, I think, you know, most of this is just our recommendation to kind of bring some of your outside expertise that you've been relying on for all these years in-house, and centralizing it to having somebody that can take ownership and control of this, so that you're not waiting on those to, you know, to dictate what sort of reporting requirements you need. And this is important to HUD's mind, because this is the single document, other than the audit, so I'm talking about the annual plan and report and plan. It's a single document they're using to evaluate how you guys are doing as an organization. And if that's not filed timely, impedes their process of evaluating how you're doing, and even internally for you, if you don't have timely information, how can you evaluate yourselves as a board and monitor how you're doing based the bench, based on the benchmarks that's set? So there are some delays this year. A lot of the data just hasn't been organized and put together in a timely manner, and it's affected that. So we obviously wanted to note that to staff, to the board, and it's been, you know, hopefully a focus going forwards, and bringing that in and kind of putting that all together. So we'll move on. I mean, on the next slide, I'm just gonna mention that, as I had already said, that first finding on eligibility and tenant files existed last year. We said it's cleared, because by the time we got here, you had taken the corrective action. And in our opinion, you know, it's, the matter's resolved. So now we'll get into the numbers. Now, trying to get, not to get too much into it, but I said we had a good year. Or you had a good year. On the bottom of there, and I know the numbers are kind of small, but the third number up from the left there is, you made almost $14 million this year, $14 million surplus, as far as funds brought in versus expenses, per se. Where'd the money go? Some of it was retained, but a lot of it was invested in some of your new programs. You spent almost $8 million invested into, you know, the Haven, Bristol Place, things of that nature. So that's reflected here. To put that in perspective, $14 million a year, in past years, you're running about $1 or $2 million a year. So $14 million is tremendously, I mean, that's a, year-on-year, that's a 50% growth on the size of your organization overall, which is tremendous. It's showing, obviously, that, you know, things are happening, and this is reflected in your financial statements that way. A couple other items on there, you know, there's about $4 million gain on the sale of Skelton, recognized in your financials, so it's a part of that gain of the $14 million. You sold Skelton, made $4 million on it. Otherwise, as we keep going here, we tend to like to look and evaluate the money coming in and where it's going. I know there's a lot of numbers up there. Some of the things I'll just point out is, you've spent $5 million more than taken in in capital activity this year. That means you're investing a lot of your funds into buildings, into, you know, new projects and things of that nature. As a board, I would expect that that's what you want to see, that's what you want to see the money going. It's, you know, revitalizing the community, it's supporting your mission, et cetera. That's a big change this year. That's, again, $4 million more than it normally is, so all good things. A couple little minor things I'll mention, because we're here, is leasing is down on the HCV program. It did trend down a little bit this year. You're at 85% lease-up, which caused a slight loss in the program. So you get X amount, you get about $1 million a year to run it, you spent slightly over the $1 million. In my mind, it's because lease-up kind of dipped a little bit. If there's any negative to be said, is that you have room to grow in that area, as far as leasing and getting more, you know, vouchers, vouchers on the streets, so to speak. Keep going here. On top of the $14 million in excess funds you got, you brought in this year, you have another $4 million sitting in HUDH reserves that are not on your books. So again, it shows an additional, the narrative says, basically, another $4 million that's really been committed to the Haven and Marketplace. Again, additional level of resources. Keep going here. Cash flow. We said you made $14 million. Where'd it go? I said it was mostly invested, but for the most part, your cash has now gone from $6 million up to $9 million. And just to put that in perspective, your operating budget as an entity is about $4 million a year, so you can operate for almost two years without collecting another dollar. So it's extremely healthy. If anything, too healthy, but we know a lot of this is committed to, you know, future developments. But it's certainly another illustration or point of the solid base and level this organization stands on, and this year's been a big part of that. Gonna keep going. The balance sheet's just showing what we've already spoken on. If we get to the next page of the balance sheet, I was just gonna reiterate, you are a $31 million organization last year, you are now a $45 million organization, so it's a 50% increase in one year. I keep, I feel like I'm repeating myself, but maybe because I'm so impressed or happy to be a part of it, I guess, but keep going. Just another note, as far as where we spent the money, we've, we're showing here, you've invested $10 million, and that's in the additions column of the schedule. Roughly $10 million into programs, into, you know, various loans with some of the new developments that are going on. This illustrates that. Keep going here. We said we, you're investing in your buildings and assets, $4 million. In case you're wondering, it's showing that, you know, you spent $2 million on this office, you put $2.5 million in rehab into the Rad Developments. Again, another illustration. Lastly, kind of packages together from here we are today towards the future, is we talked about who you are as a primary government, as in a move-to-work agency. This is just illustrating, there's what we call discreetly presented component units. Currently, that is Oakwood Trace, that is basically an organization that you control, but you don't wholly own. As you continue down this path, we see the Oakfield places, we see the Haven, we see Pinewood over there, is that you'll see this section of your financials, and really, the governance side of you expand. Because again, while you may not wholly own it, you as an organization are gonna be responsible for protecting the assets and things like that. So this side, we talk about the primary government of being a move-to-work organization and getting funding and spending it and investing it, is that the other side of the organization, the partnership aspects, we'll say, is going to explode over the next couple of years, right? So it's more of, and we work with staff on that, as far as understanding the engagements you're getting into, protecting yourselves, getting into deals and situations that benefit you as an organization, and not just getting into deals that, you know, benefit developers and things like that. So, but as you grow, this will continue to be reflected on your financial statements. Otherwise, I think that really summarizes the year at hand. It was a very good year. There were two findings that had to be reported, per se, and I think the staff would agree that it's, you know, it's kind of the breaking point of making some real change and kind of getting some ownership and advancing and moving forwards, moving forwards in your development and kind of putting the staff capacity behind it. So, you know, very good. And again, we work for the board and very, very proud to be involved in our organization that's in the forefront and doing things and, you know, not just sitting with what they have, so to speak, continuing new things. It's great to see. And you don't see it everywhere, because this is all we do, and it's, you know, it's good to see that. Hopefully, you guys see it in the community.
Thanks a lot. Tamika, can you come up and go over the corrective action plan for your department?
Excuse me?
Oh, sorry.
I have a question.
Okay.
In your summary document on the audit, you mentioned that grant revenues account for as 81% of all revenues, and that the tenant rental and fees for services account for about 4%. What makes up for the other 15%?
This year, it happens to be the sale of Skelton is the biggest thing.
Okay.
There's almost $5 million in revenues this year, which isn't typical. You did also get the HUD litigation settlement proceeds this year. That was years ago passed, where you sued the, you jointly sued the federal government, HUD, for taking your funds.
Okay.
You got that this year, so it's under $285,000.
How much was that? I'm sorry.
The $285,000.
Okay.
Approximately.
Yeah, and I think the next thing I would say is directed more towards David and the board, but I think that it's great to see that we're in a healthy financial position, and a government agency should not be holding on to dollars like this. You know, our role is to spend the dollars, not to save the dollars unless we have very specific, and I know we have some development properties that are coming up that will use some of those dollars. I think my question is, you know, we had, and our office actually experienced it in a very real way, because we call every single contact we have, every time there's an opening, we call through and we help people apply. So we're very aware of how many people are waiting for housing. So Esther Pat in the panel that we hosted estimated that about a fifth of the people who are needed, who needed subsidy receive it. We opened Bristol Place for eight hours, and 900 people showed up for some 60 slots. And we have over 40, 5,200 applicants for Housing Choice vouchers, and we are only going to actually put 1,500 on the list. So we're gonna clear out, they're not, most of those folks are not even gonna end up on a wait list to wait for Housing Choice vouchers. So it's actually hard to hear our financial position, because, and I want to know, and you, you're not a policymaker, I think you spoke my feelings about this, which is that, you know, you have room to grow to get more vouchers on the street, was your quote. And I actually think, you know, that's not for the auditor to decide, that's for the board to decide, but I appreciate the comment. I'd like to know, we are doing a great job, we're reinvesting, we got over two years of dollars in the bank, how can we produce more vouchers out of this? What are we looking at? And I know this maybe is something you want to come back to us with a conversation, but we've had, the two years I've been on the board, very healthy financial position, and yet, we're still not moving those vouchers where they need to be. So could you speak to that?
So as related to the lease-up, some of the issues was around our rules that we had in terms of MTW and not allowing people to be on our program if they hadn't been working for 25 hours a week for six months prior to coming on. So we cleared that up when we changed the policy, so that should be a great increase. We're doing more work around landlord initiatives and landlord recruitment. We had a power hour at landlords, and we was able to sit down and talk. In that hour, we even had talked about our proposed MTW activity that we have. Part of MTW, you can have landlord initiatives. And we talked about a way to help the landlords and encourage them to lease up more of our clients with one of those initiatives that we're supposed to submit for this year. So I think the biggest issue that we have, we resolved it around that policy change. A lot of landlords are happy about it, I mean, as far as our development partners, it was hard going through the waiting list, so it's gonna help us out in a tremendous way, and I feel that the staff, we've been cross-training, we've been doing so many things to help build the capacity that you talked about and take ownership of that. And I can guarantee you, we'll lease up more vouchers if we could, you know, do so. Now, it takes two to lease up a voucher. It takes the landlord willingness and a tenant. Some landlords aren't willing to lease our clients, and that's one of the reasons we're having a big policy direction toward source of income discrimination around vouchers. Landlords saying, if you're not working, if you own child support or whatever, or if you're living on alimony, if you have a voucher, we don't want you. And so we gotta do better with landlord recruitment and understand landlords. So we're now at the table with the landlords. Like I said before, we did a landlord recruitment video, we had a power hour, and the staff is preparing to move forward and get more people leased up.
And so, there might be a piece I'm missing in the rules. If we're not leased up over a certain percentage, we can't release additional vouchers, so to speak, is that the issue? That we're limited? I mean, why wouldn't we, say our take rate is only 70%, right? So why can't we put more vouchers on the street? Like, are we limited because our take rate, our lease-up, as you're calling it, our lease-up is limited by a certain percentage, and that's what's kind of choking back our expenditure of vouchers?
No, I mean, like I said, the issue is that we weren't finding clients that was eligible for our program before, because of our MTW requirements. And so now, that's resolved. So before, a person had to work for six months, 25 hours a week, well, you couldn't be on our program if you wasn't elderly or disabled. We don't have that no longer. Now, somebody with zero income can get on our program, and our staff will work, help them move forward. And so we were going through applicant, applicant, and applicant that wasn't doing that. So now, that's why we changed the policy that not only just have 25 hours, but if you make this amount of money. We had clients that was coming to us wanting housing, that maybe was making $20 an hour, but was only working, you know, 15 hours a week, right? Because they was going to school, and they wouldn't get on a program. And so internally, we had to make some educated decisions, and that's why we went to the board and was able to get that changed. And I think that's the downfall for us. If we put, we can't put vouchers on the street with people if the people not qualifying for the program. And so that was the problem. That was our biggest problem. And that's why we was paying those vacancy payments to Thornbury and those developments also, because they were trying to lease people up, and they can prove they couldn't, because the people couldn't qualify for the program.
So how many vouchers do we actually have?
Well, it's kind of, it's different. Because we're an MTW agency, in a general sense, a housing authority is allotted so many vouchers, and it's against the rules to over-lease, right? As an MTW agency, we can choose to lease as much as we want to. But again, we gotta remember also, those developments that's underway, getting ready to close and getting ready to start, some of that money is allocated to help those developments come through. And so, so instead of us just relying on landlords, we're developing properties in partnerships so we can lease up more people also. And we're gonna continue that process. So I can guarantee you, this is gonna change. If we have to bring in another staff person to help us get the more clients on the street, we'll do that. But one, the landlord initiative, I think, would be a big help, and...
Yeah, I think from what we've seen just across the nation, and it's a show of healthy environment, or economic environment, and that landlords don't need you.
Yeah.
Right? And so when times are tough, that's when you don't have a problem finding landlords to rent to individuals. It's now that they don't want to have to deal with you. They don't have to deal with HUD if they don't have to. And they have very short memories. So you were there for them when they needed somebody to pay the rent, now they don't need you. So landlord initiatives, education, things like that, kind of go along the way of saying, to get rid of the negative stereotype off of, because they're still, unfortunately, a larger, at least, you know, a mission line.
Yeah, negatively. Because the thing about it is, they want to make sure that their housings are kept up with what we're expecting it, making sure the clients keep it up, and make us better in the market for landlords. Because a lot of times, when the housings are tore up, they don't want to rent.
Right.
So that's where that's all coming from. The cleanliness, making sure the place is kept up, and with us inspecting on a regular basis, making sure the house is in shape, and making sure the tenants take care of their part or taking care of the house, because if they gotta pay for what they messed up, they won't mess it up again.
And they're held accountable.
Yeah, held accountable for it.
I'd just like to say that we're all highly proud of the fact that we are one of 39 agencies to be a move-to-work agency, and along with that, we're growing and learning new things. And there was a few problems initially, but we're starting to see those problems and eradicate some of those problems, and this is, this is a step in the right direction.
And just, sorry.
Go ahead.
Just to add to that, you know, it was a number of barriers, so to speak, that we had around leasing up, not just that policy, which we made that change. And I'm thankful that the board allowed us to make that change to help the community. But, you know, we had some policies that only allowed us to move in people on certain days, right? And so landlords was like, well, why can't I move somebody in on the third day of the month? Why it have to be the first or the 15th? And so we changed that policy also, and that was encouragement to the landlords. So we looked at every way we could in order to make changes to help benefit our clients and our program, and we've made those changes. We can't go back from what happened before, but we can move forward and continually make change. And the landlord initiative that we're considering now, it should help more landlords be encouraged for our program. I'll go over it just briefly. Right now, a number of housing authorities that's MTW have landlord initiatives that help. One of the things, the landlord initiative that we're talking about and discussing as a possibility for our organization, if a landlord is leasing to a current Housing Choice voucher participant, and they move out, if they lease to another Housing Choice person, we'll pay them one month rent. Like, while they repairing their unit, they get the one month. And so that's gonna encourage them to continue to lease our clients, and we're helping them out. Because I'm gonna be honest with you, like you said, I had a landlord in my office just the other day and talked about the damage that the tenant caused, and that, you know, the tenant had bedbugs, and it cost her all this money to get it repaired. And so, that's a barrier. You know, a lot of our clients don't have that income, and so we have to come up with ways and use our flexibilities to help opportunities for landlords that's our partners to benefit our clients. And that's one of the initiatives that we're looking at doing.
Yeah, so I did hear some landlords talking about the program you gave, and you invited them to the luncheon, and they really liked it because they felt that they were gonna be a part of housing, and that you would be helping the landlord and the tenant to connect together, get relationship, and they were really appreciative of that. They spoke really highly about that.
Any other questions before?
I have one question.
Oh, sorry.
The late reporting, is that fixable, easily fixable? The late reporting that happened, as a finding?
Yeah. I mean, it seems to me that the FDS itself, the financial side, is a nuance as far as kind of a one-time event. But I think the fixable side, as far as MTW, involves hopefully bringing some things internally, to which David can speak more on, but I would think so, yes.
And so, a part of our audit, when we have audit findings, we have to do corrective actions to HUD and show them what we're planning to do to fix those issues. We prepared our corrective actions to send out, and that's why I wanted Tamika to go over the corrective actions related to the voucher program, and Matt to go over the corrective action related to the finance program.
Regarding the finding of recertifications not completed or not completed timely, the corrective action is, the HCV director will run monthly reports of recertifications due, and will distribute them to applicable staff and third-party management companies 60 days prior to due dates. And then also, we will, the HCV director will review documentation of all recertifications not completed 60 days prior to effective date, and ensure that appropriate action is taken for tenant-delayed recertifications. And then regarding the income calculations performed during examinations contained errors for that finding, the corrective action, HCV will increase the percent of files that undergo quality control from 20 to 50% each month. HACC may utilize a third-party compliance company to perform QC on files. Also, there will be specialized training for the MTW rent calculation requirements we will, will be provided at least annually to applicable HAC staff and third-party management management companies.
So, so another thing, I don't want to, you know, um, throw anybody under the bus, but when we have third-party partnership or third-party management companies, as Tamika referred to, um, the audit, audit to look at their files. We looked, we looked at the errors that we had in files and it was what, only... Tamika, how many files that we found that had errors or that was our files?
Oh, we only, we only had very few. I think it was like four or less. Uh, most of them didn't come from the third-party management or related to recertification or things like that.
And I met with the third-party management, um, one of the third-party management companies, um, the, the, uh, chief operating officer for them. And I explained that, you know, um, their errors, now, we had errors also, but their errors caused us to have audit finding, and that's unacceptable. If they can't do what they need to do in terms of leasing up the units and doing the files correctly, then we'll take over the management ourselves and do it. And also, um, they committed to getting a third-party compliance person, a third-party compliance company also, to help them and they're recruiting better staff. So we are working with that. So I just, I'm, like I said, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus. We have to take ownership of what we did, but many of the errors came from outside the organization's management.
Yeah, it's certainly identified that way. I mean, it's clear. Ultimately, as the organization, you're ultimately responsible. Uh, the fact that they're doing it for you is, is, is a matter of convenience, right? Um, and the, the, the risk there is that they're not really trained, especially for you guys when you have specific requirements that, it just, it's just a matter of getting that same level of training that you had to do your own staff to this property management company that may not have the same level of staffing commit. You have no control over that, right? So that's really the risk. It's just a matter of, uh, additional oversight, really.
And then, for example, the statewide referral network, um, you know, a lot of, uh, of our companies we work with don't really understand it. Maybe some of our staff don't understand it. So we invited Ida to come to our, we negotiated and Ida's had been committed to come to our building and train, uh, up to 60 to 70 people in our community, uh, on a day training because we want to get it right. You know, the statewide referral network is an important piece of what we do as an organization, and then clients, um, need it. And we want to make sure we hold everybody responsible for following those guidelines, whether it's us or the third-party companies. And when we talk about third-party companies, we don't hire them to manage for us. They're a part of development. So when we have a development, for example, we're managing Haven. Um, Thornberry and Providence being managed by the management company that's tied to the developer, right? And so when we close deals, we make decisions on who has the management authority. Um, now, we can change that if they continually, uh, fall short of their duties. But we didn't hire them to manage for us. They're managing, um, the building that they helped develop in partnership with us.
Matt?
So the, so for the finding related to late reporting, um, so as it relates to the financial data schedule not filed timely, um, a fee accountant will be hired to increase capacity and support staff in completing the year-end financial close to ensure timely submission of the FDS. Um, as it relates to the MTW annual report not being filed timely, um, the FDS will be completed on time, which will provide the required sources and uses data needed to submit the MTW report on time. Um, and then, um, related to MTW data and documentation not retained in an effective manner, a newly hired MTW program analyst will be responsible for collection, reporting, and maintenance of all MTW data for the annual report. So as, as was mentioned before, bringing a lot of that, 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 all of that reporting, um, collection, retaining all that, bringing that in-house, to an in-house staff.
And so just to, you know, clarify, um, one of the things, you know, the board tasked me with in coming in is to build capacity, hire quality staff, make sure staff members are trained in, in an appropriate way. And let's take ownership of the things that we can take ownership in. I think we're, um, went a long way in that. Nick, who's our intern now, is finishing up his master's. He's been with us for about what, executive intern? He's been with us for a couple of months, three months, doing a great job. And our hopes is that, and he does analysis as part of his master's program. So our hopes is that he come on, help us, and continually work with us after he graduate. And we're just getting ready to make him an offer to bring him on part-time, up to like 15 to 20 hours a week, where he can still go to school but help us out in that way. We need to bring that capacity in. Also, we brought in Tremaine, um, John from Hickory Point Bank. So he comes with a different skill set of management, uh, education, finance. And so our development pieces, John does a great job with development. But John's role in development is making sure, um, the contractors do what they're supposed to do. Far as the numbers aspect of it, we need somebody here to watch the numbers for us to understand how the performance work. So a lot of that is, you know, before we had to always call and ask somebody, "Well, how's this doing? What's going on with that?" We want to do it ourself, and that's what we're trying to build. Now, we all have some growing pains, but we will get there, I promise you that.
Any other questions for your auditor? Thank you very much. That's your... Thanks. I'll introduce you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Put it back now.
We can provide each commissioner with a copy of the corrective action, um, so they can just see what we're planning on doing.
Next item on the agenda is the presentation, well, it's a Bristol homeownership presentation by Kerry Wyman, the Neighborhood Services Director.
So, so, um, as we continually move forward, it's exciting to see Bristol come into fruition. As Commissioner Chenoweth mentioned, you know, there's great interest in individuals throughout, throughout the community in terms of this development. Now, one piece that we're still working on, and, um, this is a big part of one of the partners with the housing authority in Bristol Place, the city of Champaign, homeownership aspect. And so we've been really moving forward and trying to get that solidified to be submitted in this year's, uh, MTW plan. And so Kerry wanted to come and talk to our board a little bit, and I think I'm going to city council, uh, on the 5th, right?
November 5th, correct.
November 5th, yeah.
Um, so we've had several meetings and conversations. Thanks again to Tiffany and, and David. This is complicated and not something, uh, as I was listening to your auditor. Um, what we're trying to do, I think, is a little bit unique, um, but very important to the city of Champaign, so we just want to thank you in advance. In general, right, you do, you do rental housing. Um, what we're trying to accomplish in Bristol Place is creating a homeownership opportunity but using those low-income housing tax credits. So we know that that requires a 15-year rental period, um, so we're not talking about homeownership until, well, long after I'm gone from the city of Champaign. So...
Say that now.
Yeah. So, uh, the first 15 years purely are a rental program. Um, we're partnering with ADVIS, the Housing Authority in the city. We're in a tri-party agreement for that. And so the first challenge that we see is that your moving-to-work program is an eight-year program. So we've already acknowledged, uh, we, I say, uh, the three, uh, partners, but I want to just formally bring that up, is that as we move forward, the Bristol Place, um, tenants that are wanting to be in the long-term homeownership, uh, will have to be considered for those years nine through 15, right? So currently, if you're non-senior, non-disabled, and you're in the move-to-work program, uh, you're expected to complete that in eight years. So one of the first challenges that we're seeing is what do we, we have to create something that acknowledges that people can be there, um, if they're in the homeownership pathway through year 15.
Well, what I was talking about before when you were here, about revising the eight-year plan and making it extended longer. We need to revisit that from eight years to make it longer.
And, and if the board does, that would certainly, um, help with that. So I've just, but I want to raise, as the, as my focus is on Bristol Place, um, what we don't want to see is that people move in, uh, on a pathway to homeownership, but then abruptly in year eight, they would have to leave. So we're trying to, um, we want to address that. Uh, as, as Tiffany and David and I have met, and, and I, um, am very familiar with HUD regulations. I've dealt with them for almost 20 years, but I work on a different side of the HUD House. Uh, our funding at the city comes through, um, CPD, and your funding comes through PIH, Public and Indian Housing. Um, uh, it's my understanding that you cannot create a program that would be site-specific for Bristol Place. Um, if there's going to be a homeownership program, it's, it would likely be a move, a moving-to-work and MTW activity that would, um, offer homeownership. And you already have some in your current MTW. For example, you currently partner with Habitat for Humanity. But that again, right, is not site-based. It's available throughout your jurisdiction. Um, so any program that you would create for homeownership, Bristol Place would be one component underneath an activity that would be available countywide. Um, and so I don't want to speak for David and Tiffany, but I think one thing that we've come up with is calling it moving to ownership. Um, so we are looking at a Bristol Place activity underneath, um, a future moving-to-ownership activity that would allow people to transition from a project-based voucher inside Bristol Place into a homeownership opportunity. You're probably familiar, just in some of the presentations over the several years that we've been working on Bristol Place. Originally, the developer, ADVIS, has referred to the homeownership program as the good steward program. Uh, what that entails is allowing people who are living inside Bristol Place, who complete certain things, and I'll cover those in just a moment, to earn up to $2,000 per year in an equity. Um, it's not cash. They don't make $2,000 in cash payments per year. But, um, the property management company in, uh, in conjunction with the housing authority and the city would be tracking annually if they complete, if they satisfactorily, satisfactorily complete inspections on their unit and if they've attended certain workshops. Our goal is to create a pathway to homeownership and to help them be successful in year 15. And so they'll have an opportunity over that 15-year period to earn up to 2,000. So at the end of the 15 years, they would have up to a $30,000 equity credit that could be applied to their purchase. Uh, the city wants to, um, at this stage of the game, it's really the housing authority and the developer. Um, our relationship as the city is through the housing authority. Um, we're joint partners, if you will, that are sharing in a developer fee. Uh, we're sharing in the cash flow. But you're really the entity that's in partnership on the site. And so, um, but what we'd like to offer is that we know that many of the families in year, you know, 13, 14, and 15, if there's any concerns, they're probably going to be coming to city council, um, and asking questions, rightfully, because we started this project. And so we'd like to offer, um, I'm offering from my department, that we'd be participating in offering some of those annual workshops. We'd really like to sit down at least once a year, um, offer people some equity credit for attending this. But we want to sit down with them and say, you know, "What did you complete successfully? Did you do your, you know, were those, were your inspections successful? Did you attend any of the budgeting or the financial literacy workshops?" Um, when we get closer, uh, towards the 15-year mark, we want to make sure that we're offering things like home maintenance workshops, teaching people how to maintain their home throughout the process. But really, right before we transition into them purchasing the home, we want to make sure they have all the, the knowledge and tools to become a homeowner. Um, so we want to be in partnership with you and help offer those, whether it's us doing the logistics. Um, but we want to sit down with the property management company and the housing authority and all three parties with that tenant are in agreement as to how much equity they've earned year to year, and they can see that balance grow over time. So we think, uh, through the meetings that we've been, um, discussing this, some of the challenges, uh, that we see is that, uh, as I've already mentioned, that we've got to address years nine through 15, just based on your current move-to-work program. Also, looking at the, um, the income of the family, right? So over a 15-year window, we anticipate, we hope, that households would grow their incomes, uh, their income. Um, that's a key component of, I think, your goal with move-to-work, is to encourage people to get towards self-sufficiency. So, um, again, how do, we'll have to make sure that there's a way to address that. And, and I think David and Tiffany have, uh, have some ideas there. Again, this will be your activity, um, so we're just asking from the city. We too want to encourage people to have a homeownership opportunity and see that income grow. But to not have a limit by the time they graduate. So if someone, um, starts in your program and maybe they're in an education component, uh, education or certification training, by year 15, maybe they're the manager of wherever they're working and their income's grown. Um, having a way that allows them to stay in Bristol if they want to purchase the home. The last one I want to talk about is kind of the most costly and probably the one that's caused us, the three of us, the most stress. You see the smiles on their faces, bless them. Um, it's called right sizing. So what happens? We have two, three, and four-bedroom units in Bristol Place. There are no one-bedroom units. If each of you for just a moment would think of your own family situation today and think of your family-sized situation 15 years from now, won't it look different? Probably, right? So how do we, hopefully they move out, right, David?
Yeah, we have kids, hopefully.
Um, so there's a cost to that. Uh, first of all, we don't have any one-bedrooms in the current phase of Bristol. Now, we know there's a phase two that's going to be planned out. We've always, um, estimated that that might offer senior housing, so we're thinking that might be some one-bedroom senior apartments, and that would be a lovely transition. But those would be apartments. Those would not be ownership opportunities. So right now, we're looking at, of the 90 units being built in Bristol, one of those is the manager's unit, so we're now down to 89 units. Of those, 60, so we have 64 single-family homes. And of those, um, there will be six that are market rate. So really looking at 50, 58, I think I'm doing the math, 58, single-family homes that will be available for homeownership. Some of those are two-bedrooms, some are three, three-bedrooms, and there are some four-bedrooms. So what happens if a family moves in that today needs a four-bedroom, but in year 11 really only needs a one-bedroom? How do we handle that? And so after many, many conversations, um, in part of what I'll be presenting to my council on November 5th, um, I'd like to take a move-to-work, um, moving-to-homeownership activity to council, but there will be a cost. And what I'll be presenting to them is that the city of Champaign will help, um, write down that cost. We've estimated that if every family, um, and I have a really small print chart, but, um, if every family that's in the two, three, and four bedrooms had to move down to the smallest size possible, because if every family shrunk and no longer needed the size, um, and that, and we estimated originally, we looked at year one. What happens if in year one, I'm sorry, if in year two, that families needed to go down in size? And where we landed is, um, I think we're comfortable, as a staff, I'm going to be presenting to council, we're not going to right-size people in years one through eight. Your normal, we'll follow your move-to-work, your regular activity, follow those rules. As, as people are just tenants, they may move around. But once we get to year nine, if they've entered into this moving-to-ownership activity, we'd really like for them to have the opportunity to stay where they are purchasing their home, right? They're still not the owner. They have to go through year 15. But if they've been checking all the boxes and doing all the right things, we'd like for them to have that opportunity to buy the unit that they're in. With that comes a cost to them. If I'm in a four-bedroom, but all my kids have moved out, maybe I'm single, um, there's a high cost to pay for utilities. There's a higher cost to maintain. Every time I need to paint, every time I need to re-carpet, even my roof size is going to be a little bit more expensive. So we want to make sure that we're walking people through so that they understand, yes, this is my family home where I raised my kids, but it really is more expensive to stay here and I need to understand what that cost is. So we want to help them with that. If they all say that they want to stay, we estimate that cost could be $1.5 million. Uh, that's the cost of, um, the higher rent that needs to be paid on the unit, but what you can actually collect as a housing authority on your voucher. And so, uh, just looking at by bedroom size and using current rents and, uh, looking at the 20, actually, we use the 2018 market, uh, fair market rents, it looks like that cost would be $1.5 million. We know that not every family will need to down, uh, be right-sized, and we know that not every family will need it for the entire period of time. And so I, um, have really struggled with what numbers. So I think what we're going to be presenting to city council is going to be closer to $750,000. So starting in year nine, the cost to the city of Champaign would be, um, from year nine to 15, approximately $750,000. Um, so that will be the ask I have of my council. The ask I have of you, and as I work with David and Tiffany, is that we come up with an activity that we can take to them, um, in that November and show them, um, kind of the commitment from the housing authority to make some of these allowances and that the city of Champaign would come along as the financial partner, um, and consider paying for that gap. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I don't have any right now.
One question. So, um, I'm a latecomer to the Bristol Place, um, so I am still, there's a lot of moving So, I'm a latecomer to the Bristol Place, so I am still, there's a lot of moving parts to it. It's unclear to me, and a little bit from where I'm standing, it seems like a strange design to have a 15-year home, like, you can't own your home until 15 years, but we have a move-to-work that's eight years. So, we knew from the beginning there was a seven-year gap. And I'm wondering, early on in the process, as you were talking that through, what kinds of designs you were looking at, and is this a change in what you discussed from the beginning when you knew this gap would exist? And I think a second question that might help me understand is, are the, you know, is Bristol Place basically project-based vouchers? And do they sit there until somebody purchases the home? So, are we required to keep project-based vouchers in the homes after eight years, for example? And I haven't read all the documents, there's probably answer to that buried in that, because in some ways, it doesn't make sense to subsidize folks, and then they purchase, and then they move. My guess is that there's a middle income where there's no subsidy. There's a time period of subsidization, and not being subsidized proves in some ways that you can continue to be in your housing, you can purchase and stay. So, wonder if you could answer those two questions. One is a little bit of a historical question about what the designs were and if this is different. And then, the second is, you know, do these project-based vouchers need to stay in these homes after eight years?
I answered the project-based part of it. So, we're, as Kerry clearly articulated, that we share, not only the developer fee, but we share cash flow for the benefit of the development. We're in the ownership part of it, and so, for us to take the vouchers away from the property would hurt and harm not only the clients, but the deal that we made with the tax-credit investors. And if we, excuse me, on our deal, it'd be really hard for us to get other investors to work with us to invest. Now, it is reasons why the Housing Authority could take vouchers from the property. If the management company is unable to lease the property, I've taken vouchers, project-based vouchers from developments because they weren't able to lease it, but we weren't in ownership, though. So, I've done that in the past. And I wouldn't, it, I don't want to, you know, bite off my nose or spite my face, in a sense. So, we made a real decision a long time ago to invest in this property, and I think the Housing Authority would be rightly to keep that investment going.
So, the answer is yes. The vouchers stay with the property until purchase, after a 15-year period. So, we're obligated essentially, except in a situation where management is not doing their job, that we would keep the vouchers present with the properties for 15 years. That answers my question, that question.
And, again, I am not from the PIH side, but I, I'm looking at Tiffany a little bit. I think part of our conversation too was if someone's income, let's say in year 10, if someone's income gets to the point where there is no subsidy, that technically, there's a voucher there for a period of time, but you're not subsidizing the rent, correct? So, does that mean, so the Housing Authority would not be paying on the rent, the tenant, because they want to purchase? They're going to be fully paying the rent if they choose to stay there? So, the, so there wouldn't be a financial cost to the Housing Authority? I don't want to speak out of term, is that correct?
Totally right. No, HUD goes, move to work to help clients increase income, and if a person's increasing their income and preparing to purchase that home, we wouldn't want to put them out, especially if they're in that program. And as you said before, once a client get to a certain point in terms of income, they're no longer, they're no longer a part of our program that's related to subsidies. So, they will be, even though it's a voucher-only unit, they will be paying the full rent theirself.
And just to follow up, does the income, so say we're not doing a half payment to that property because they're paying the full rent, does that, does the, that half amount that we would have applied to it, does it go to Bristol Place in a different, or does it basically just stay with the Housing Authority and can be reinvested in different places? Okay, so, there's a benefit of us basically receiving full rent in that transition period between the end of the eight years, for example, or them becoming self-sufficient and achieving homeownership?
I think so. And as far as Bristol Place, because it is a 15-year tax credit, and I don't remember if it was 15 or 20 years, but you guys do have a half contract, correct, with, so there's already, whether we're allowing John Smith to stay years one through 15, or John Smith is one through eight, and then Sue Doe is there from years nine through 15, you were always invested in putting vouchers in for that long of a term. It's just a matter of us allowing the same families to stay longer than maybe what you typically, typically would.
And I know we use the word voucher, but it's really not a voucher, it's the subsidy, you know, because it's not a piece, well, I guess it's a piece of paper, but it's not like we have these many pieces of paper, so it's the subsidies that we put on it. A lot of people get confused about voucher, voucher, but it's the subsidies that we're providing. I wish HUD would do away with some old language that they have.
And I'll let you explain all of that on November 5th, and I will not speak to that. I want to go back to your question of the first one, the historical, and I, I have been involved on this from the very beginning. I don't recall that we had this conversation, so I don't remember when your eight-year mark came into play, but we've been working on Bristol with the Housing Authority since 2011. So, I don't know if your eight-year limit has been around that long?
About five years, maybe?
So, we were already?
Started when we?
Yeah.
I see, so Bristol Place started before move-to-work.
Yeah. So, that's part of the?
We removed the work agency, but we hadn't?
You hadn't put the eight-year?
Put it on our residents until?
Correct.
2015.
Maybe?
2016.
2016? Okay.
And then, the right sizing also was a policy that was adopted by you later before we started. So, we're just, we're trying to squid our, squid, fit our square peg through this round hole, if you will.
Yeah, but not only for Bristol Place, we need to revisit that term. There's other things going on in the community that residents needs to be having that anyway, extend it longer, because you don't want to kick people off if they're not able to take care of theirself. It's like making them homeless. So, we're going to revisit that piece anyway.
Becca had a comment that she wanted to make, but I just wanted to add something about the right sizing. So, every Housing Authority does right sizing in a sense of putting people in the property that their families fit in, right? Because if we're, if we're paying for a five-bedroom property and there's only one person there, we're just throwing money out the window. So, the right sizing is a policy, and maybe, I don't know, in the past, has Champaign Housing Authority decided, well, we weren't going to right-size people and let people stay? But, every Housing Authority right sizes because it's a waste to, you know, pay extra utilities and extra bedrooms for individuals that's not sitting there. And so, that's, that's why we did that policy. And my assumption, I wasn't here when it was created, though.
Yeah, I had two, two questions, kind of going back to the, sort of the, what happens in that gap period between years nine and 15? So, for people that have stayed in their, in their home for those first eight years, they're still, are they still sort of beholden to the requirements of the program? I mean, and what sort of like oversight is happening for those individuals? And are they still earning the equity in the, in the home moving forward up to that 15-year mark when they can be, be part of the, or, you know, can purchase the property?
Right. We've talked about years one through eight, everyone is a move-to-work MTW, your standard MTW program. And it gets confusing because in your MTW, you have a $2,000 a year.
Incentive.
Incentive. Okay, but we don't, so we don't want to double incentivize people. So, everyone enrolls, and if, if you're in a single-family unit and you say, in 2020, yes, I'd like to purchase this when it's available in 15 years, right? So, you start in, you're going to be earning that equity credit, kind of behind the scenes, we're going to meet with you at least annually to go over that. But, let's say in year eight, for whatever reason, you decide, you've transferred to another state because of a job opportunity. So, then you're really not a move-to-work, you're not purchasing the home.
Right.
So, we've talked about, do they then actually convert to just your, they were always really just an MTW participant. You have an incentive in your, in your plan already that they would maybe benefit from, but they won't get the $2,000 equity credit because they didn't actually purchase the home. So, then they move out. If someone stays through year 10, or 13, let's say, so they had to, so they've earned, they've had 13 years of equity, and if they've earned all 2,000, they get $26,000 to offset their purchase price. They are not going to also then qualify for your MTW $2,000 incentive. They won't get both.
Right.
I don't know that I'm answering your question, but?
Well, I guess I was just wondering for, like, for, let's say they stay, they stay through year 15. Do they, they continue to earn that $2,000 equity, even though they have officially sort of like graduated or finished through the MTW eight-year period?
The equity is not, the credit, the equity for the, the, the development team offering those clients, they get that, it's not an MTW, it's not an MTW activity. That's separate, yeah.
Great, thank you. And then, my other question was for, let's say an individual moves into one of the Bristol Place properties on year nine of the, of this, of the 15-year period before homeownership is available, those individuals will still have the opportunity to purchase the home at that 15-year mark?
Yeah, that's a great question. We haven't really talked about that. So, we know people are going to come and go. So, in year nine, I move in, I'm a brand-new MTW client of the Housing Authority, so I've just started, so I'm moving in in year nine, but I'm in year one of MTW, and I have eight years, right? So, I'm moving in, but I'm going to state my, if I'm in a single-family unit, I can say, I, I think I want to buy this when it becomes available. So, now, I only have six years, right? Six years left to work through it. And if, if I'm doing all the right things, then yes, that opportunity would be available to me. But, I only have $12,000 in equity, six years times 2,000 per year. So, when I get to the purchase price, my purchase price will only be brought down 12,000. Maybe my neighbor had the full 30,000 because they were there from year one. If you move out, if you leave either voluntarily or non-voluntarily, if you're asked to leave, you don't get to keep the credit, you don't get, right, you don't get to come back and then restart up again. You'd have to start over from the beginning.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thanks, Kerry.
Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes from our regular meeting. Any corrections to those minutes?
There's no corrections, I make a motion that we approve the minutes, the regular minutes meeting of August 25th, 2019.
You have a second? Roll call.
Commissioner Chenoweth?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Wachowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Next item, new business. First under new business is Resolution 2019-14, approval of joint venture agreement for development.
That's typical in a development partnership, we just have a joint venture to partner with the developer to move forward with the development. We just haven't had that yet, we went through it, and we're ready to bring it to the board for approval as we get the board to close on that property.
Any questions regarding that resolution? No? Have a motion, please?
Make a motion, reapprove Resolution 2019-14, approval of joint venture agreement for LAD.
Second? Anyone want to have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Chenoweth?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Wachowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Next is Resolution 2019-15, adopting and authorizing the execution of agreements and documents related to Oakfield Place development.
And that's just another formality that we have to go through in closing deals, less given authorization to move forward to get the deal closed.
Any resolutions?
Also make a, I also make a motion that we approve Resolution 2019-15, adopting and authorizing the execution of agreements and documents related to Oakfield Place development.
You have a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Chenoweth?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Wachowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Next, the Executive Director's report.
Excuse me, sir, we'll start with the employee of the month.
Good afternoon. Our employee of the month for the month of September is not here.
She doesn't, she's not here.
Oh, oh, I was like, I know, I just saw her. The employee of the month is Nicole Melton. Nicole is the property manager at Stair Place. Nicole's colleagues have nominated her for employee of the month. She's very dedicated to her residents and takes pride in her work, and I wish she had been here. But, congratulations, Nicole.
Thanks a lot, Tiffany, for that employee of the month activity. Next, you know, like every month, I provide the board members with a number of documents of our activities and a brief overview of what we've been able to do in that month. And so, I have a couple of new additions I just wanted to add, and if you had any questions about what I provided in the executive director's report, in the background of the director's report that was sent out to you, feel free to ask. And so, one thing that's very exciting is we talk about preparing our clients for better opportunities. We was just awarded a $72,000 family self-sufficiency grant from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. We invested about 1,900 in the grant, services, and that investment paid off. And that grant goes to hire a full-time staff person to focus on family self-sufficiency activities, so that's a very good help for our Housing Authority. Another thing I just wanted to mention also is our very own Tiffany Gonzalez, who's on the National Housing Committee, was invited to go to, and I lost the paperwork, I was supposed to say. She was invited to go, why don't you just tell them, Tiffany, where you was invited to go? I left it, I left it in office.
It would be so much nicer if you did it.
She wouldn't know she's going anyway.
I'm always prepared.
Okay, thank you. Oh, it's right here. Is that?
Yes, sir.
All right, well, I can read it now.
Go to the next page.
Okay. See, I always need some help. So, Tiffany was invited, extended a great opportunity to the 2019 International Forum on Housing and Community Development, creating opportunities. That forum that will be held in Austin, Texas on October 12th through the 14th. This is a great honor because not only will she be working with some of our nation's finest executives throughout, but she also be working with delegates coming from Canada, the Netherlands, and South Africa. And so, I'm just happy that, you know, our staff members continue to be recognized and given opportunities to work to better not just our community, but the communities around the world. So, congratulations on that, Tiffany. We did also, as we continue, started, continued our knowledge process, we provided the commissioners with the new handbook. Our Commissioner Rose, he went to the Commissioner Trin in Indianapolis, and he recommended that we get this book for all the commissioners, and so, we fought through on that, sir, so no problem. And we're excited about tonight's event, Dallas for Scholars, but we also are equally excited about the gala, which is going great. And we really have a surprise guest that's coming, so our Midwest Regional Administrator Joe Galvin, well, Joseph Galvin, I call him Joe because I see him that, but he's coming to speak to us. So, he's, it's exciting when you can get the top official in Region Five, who covers six, seven states, to come down and bless us with an opportunity to hear from him about the programs that HUD provides and the services that we give to our community. We have finished our salary study, as we talked about before, and we're working to implement a plan on how we can provide those increases and stay in budget. And after that, I have no other additional announcements, other than the ones that's in the background, if any commissioner had any questions about that, feel free to ask.
Any questions?
Okay, then we'll get ready to go to departmental reports. Who's first? It's coming up. Oh, development. While John's coming up to the podium. While John's coming up to the podium. Well, we in DC, we had a great opportunity, you know, to work on some efforts. My way with FADA, we're working on a lot of legislation for our country. We're working with HUD, hand-in-hand, trying to make sure the policies are created in the right way. And when doing that, we have wins, we have losses. I had an opportunity to sit and talk to Senator Collins from Maine, who's the Chair of the T-HUD Committee. And so, you know, those opportunities come from between when you get to talk to the people that's making the decisions related to that. So, we was able to talk about our programs and what we do as an organization, and how some of the added flexibilities lead to more success and more investments in our community. So, I just wanted to add that I did provide a number of position papers that FADA has in the background. One of the things I did note is that the budget, FADA's budget, well, I'm sorry, HUD's proposed budget shows an increase in all funding areas. In negotiations, it's usually a 2% decrease. And so, that 2% decrease there in programs that we don't have. So, we're in pretty good condition in terms of getting, being fully funded in a program that we operate from the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Good afternoon. First piece of my report is Bristol Place. We just spent a lot of time talking about it, and I rattle off a bunch of numbers every month, so this month we have pictures. The general contractor has a drone, so we can take a good look at the site. Could you scroll that? Yeah. This picture, on January 1st, there's absolutely nothing there. So, we've made good progress once we got some weather, and we're moving right along. I think they're talking about leasing up sometime in September? Maybe, maybe you don't know. Sometime in September, that's what the developer thinks, so we'll see. So, anyways, it's going very well. The Haven at the Market Place, which is a replacement for Skelton, we talked earlier in the audit report about some of the cash we have and monies that we have, the money from Skelton Place. We have used and leveraged, we leveraged that with tax credits to build 124 units to replace 84. So, we get an increase of 40 units. The buildings that we call the flats are the one-story buildings, and they are the special needs buildings. We'll have those, the first one will be finished in the middle of October. But my, the printed report says end of December for the second one. Actually, we're way ahead of that schedule at this point, so we'll have both buildings done the end of October, and we should be able to lease both of them up December 1st, while we continue work on the senior building. What else? So, and then the senior building has come along fine. The framework is done. We have rough ends for plumbing and electrical done. They were finishing up the trusses yesterday when we were there for the draw meeting. Completion date for that should be around August 15th of 2020. Oakfield Place, we just talked about a little bit. They're still working on closing the financials. Hopefully, I really would like to start a project before December at some point. So, as soon as the financials are closed, I will be going there. Pinewood Place, which is our development, just internally with no developer attached to it. There's been some delays, and I want to just go over that very quickly. We applied for a grant from IDA, which we got. When we got the construction bids, they were significantly over budget. Several reasons for that, we have to submit an estimate basically two years ahead. There's a construction boom here in town, prices were, are up, because there's a lot of work. So, we were about $860,000 over budget. We spent some time trying to find some alternate funding to fill that gap. We were not able to find anything that would satisfy IDA. No lending institution is real crazy about taking a second position, so that was a little difficult. So, we did a combination of things. We did some value engineering, and we found a couple hundred thousand dollars' worth of things that we could subtract out of the project. These buildings greatly exceed building code, so there was some opportunity to lessen some things somewhat without really damaging the quality of the buildings. We did that. IDA found another $739,000 worth of money that they could give us. So, between those two things, IDA found enough money that we could actually add back in some of the value engineering. So, we're doing very well there. Also, and we're still working on the process to close on that grant, there's been allotted things changed along the way. One of them was a funding source. Now, we're getting some money from the National Housing Trust Fund, which has different rules than IDA, so we have to resubmit a lot of things, and the review process takes time. The value engineering changed the architectural drawings, so they have to be re-reviewed, which takes time. But all these things have been resubmitted. We applied for the EPA permits today. So, we're moving along. We're hoping to close on the grant at IDA's October Board Meeting, which I believe is the 19th. And we will get the funding once we have, I'm not sure we'll have all of our submittals and reviews completed by that date. But we're trying to, we're looking for a start date of mid-November, maybe December 1st on that project. And then, that'll be about a 12-month build-out. And then, the other rural sites in the small towns, we're just working on closing the finances on those, and once that's done, we can start construction there. Any questions? Yes?
First off, thank you for sticking with it on the Pinewood Place. Really excited about that development in Urbana. Why did the funding source change? Was it because of this gap? Or?
Like David had mentioned earlier, I don't do the financial side, but a part of it was an internal change in IDA, I believe, from just listening in on the phone calls, and part of it was the additional funding.
And is it the same amount of funding, or has there been changes in funding with the source change?
No, we, they have increased our, they have increased the amount of money they're gonna give us by $739,478. So, that's pretty significant.
Great. I'm excited about that project. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Operation Reports. First up is the MTW report. So, Tiffany just left out the...
She just asked me to read it for her.
Oh, okay.
She had an emergency and had to leave.
Oh, okay.
So, there were a total of 568 households in the LSS program, 739 head of household and adult household members, 90-day compliance waivers, there were 36, job training and certificate programs, there was nine, student waivers, GED in college, 75. There were 471, 71 people employed, 36 medical waivers, 42 exempt disabled, age-exempt with adult household members was 24, sole caregivers was 12, 18 or older completing high school, 26, termination zero, and referrals this month was 30. In general, the LSS Department continues to meet with the community partners. They're still going out to WorkNet, and they're starting to see their clients out there to increase the, increase their productivity. And then, they're also assisting with the gala donations.
Thank you. Now, just to add to the MTW report, is that we're in the process of submitting our new, our MTW annual plan to HUD for review. So, we're post, it's posted now, right, Lily?
Yes.
It's posted now on our website, the draft?
It's not posted on our website.
Oh, it's not posted?
We have the ad for public comment.
Okay. We have an ad for public comment related to it. So, please, if you have any concerns or questions, I advise you to reach out and make your comments known related to that plan. Our goal is to have a public hearing on October, Tuesday, October 15th at 6:00 PM, and then bring it to the board to have it submitted. The goal is to have it submitted by November 1st. Well, that's the due date, so we have to have it submitted by that time.
And just a couple of updates regarding the, which one is first? The Program Operations Report for the bi-annual inspections. September will be the last time you see such a high number for the inspections. Our inspector with NAMCA will be finished on tomorrow. And then, also, the balance of the applicants on our waitlist, it has gone down to 1573, and that's just due to people either not responding, or either they have gotten leased up. And then, as far as the voucher utilization, mainstream vouchers did increase throughout September, so we are at 23 now for, out of those 28. And then, we also have one raft, and the other ones are still searching. So, hopefully, we can hurry up and get those leased up in time. Any questions?
One thing, another thing I want to add about the LSS Department, the family self-sufficiency grant that we received, that individually working hand-in-hand with LSS in order to help better our clients. We haven't filled, we haven't decided how we plan to utilize that position yet, but the grant we received from HUD is to pay for the salary and benefits of that staff person. And so, we're excited that we'll have more help in helping our clients, and we anticipate having more clients to deal with, because we did change our policy to allow more individuals on our program. Before, it was, again, you had to work for six months and 25 hours a week in order to be on our program. Now, you can be unemployed on our program, and we will help you get to that criteria that you need to be at, so.
Hello. Basically, everything's about the same, except Columbia Place is now 100% leased, so that's a good thing. Most of the outstanding charges, outstanding grants from August have been collected. A couple of things that, the Washington Square waiting list, for the last couple of months, we've purged it, so it's down to 11 applicants on there now, so we're gonna open up that waiting list effective October 1st, and then keep it open indefinitely. September 4th, Jessica and I took residents that signed up for the trip to, we took a charter bus to the casino in Peoria. So, I think there was 13 that wanted to go. It was $5, and they got a buffet out of it, and they just had a good time, just going, walking around, seeing everything inside the boat. With the cold weather coming up, the flu shots, clinics were held today at Steer and Washington Square. They'll be at Yeoman Place in Rantoul in October. Last year, the city, Village of Rantoul implemented a new drug-free addendum that all communities had to have residents sign. And Yeoman was the first property to complete all three phases of the crime-free housing program. So, that's an exciting thing that, you know, and I think they're gonna do something and have Mr. Northern speak.
I mean, it's exciting. We the first landlord to finish the process. That just goes to what we want to do as an organization, take the lead, and also follow rules and regulations in the right way. So, yeah, they do, they, because it's new to them, they're planning a little discussion about it, and so I was invited to come. I don't know the date and stuff yet.
Yeah, I don't even think we know.
But when we know, we'll make sure we get the information to you guys.
Ly Heap was at Yeoman, Steer and Washington Square this week, setting up appointments for the first week of October for the residents to sign up for that. I went with John yesterday to the draw meeting at the Haven, and we got to walk through the flats, and we walked through the building number one. It was very exciting. Excited to get that people in there, and it's just a good thing.
Industry reports?
First thing is just the cash disbursements for the month of August. Totals $377,288, followed by the detailed checklist during the port for August. I'll just highlight some, some of the bigger items. On page two, you'll see Building Systems of Illinois for just over $196,000. That was for the continued office renovation and addition. I believe there's just a balance of just over $60,000 after this, this one was paid, so, so getting close on that. Page eight, WJW Architects PC for $26,588. That was for the LAD development for design and development fee. On page 13, Alletta and Company, the auditors, and that was a progress billing for the 2018 audit that they're wrapping up now, and that's just about half of the total for the audit fee, for the audit, and they also do, handle our tax filings for all our entities. Page 14, NAMCA and Associates for $15,723.55. About 8,500 of that was for HQS training. We had staff here attend, as well as we had some residents that attended the HQS training. And then, just over $1,000 for a model admin plan service, and then just over $6,000 for, NAMCA also does our inspections, our HQS inspections and re-inspections. And then, the last item on page 15, University of Illinois for $15,301.12 for the MTW program evaluation for the month of July. Any questions on the detailed checklist during the port? For the budget to actual for the month of August, just a few things to note on some of the variances. On the first page, you'll see legal and audit. The variance there was related to the audit. We do have that $15,000 amount that's allocated between different departments, so that, related to that variance. And then, training and travel, we did have the HQS training that I had mentioned. We also had procurement and Section 3 training that was, they hit the books in that month, that was $7,000. And then, we had some CEO/COO travel for the month. And then, other administrative expense, the variance there, we had some consulting expenses related to just restructuring, internal restructure, just under $3,000. $8,000 in temp employees. And then, the HQS inspections, that total was just over $6,000. And then, the, I had mentioned the training piece for, this is our Small Business Opportunities Initiative, so training, the cost for them going through the HQS training was $3,300. And then, the last thing, just pest control. We had quite a few invoices we paid for Steer Place and Washington Square. So, there was 23 different invoices for Steer Place, 13 for Washington Square, related to, related to pest control. Any questions on budget actual?
Any questions? No, thank you.
Public comment?
Next item, do we have any public comments?
We need to, don't we have to approve this?
Oh, yeah. Motion to approve the financial reports?
I make a motion that we approve the financial reports. One, August 2019 cash disbursements and detailed check-listening, and also August 19th budget to actual.
Need a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Commissioner Chenoweth?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Wachowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Dare?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.
Public comments on non-agenda items? I'm sorry, you want to make, you want to? Is this a non-agenda item? Non-agenda items, right.
Can you go to my, so?
Oh, I'm speaking to my. Well, I'm not sure, I've never been in one. I have been in one, but I'm speaking. Excuse me, I would walk very well. You state your name, please?
Jerry McIntyre, Gramercy Park, you know, 458. I'm, I don't, where's the lawyer? I don't, is, there's a lawyer here, isn't there?
Yeah.
You're, okay, you're the attorney. You correct me if I'm wrong. CFR 954, I know where it went. Information donors about prospective tenants. Code of Federal Regulations, Housing Authority.
I don't know off the hand, I have to...
Okay. Well...
So, it's not a, just sorry to cut you off.
Speaking to this mic?
What I'm saying is that it's not a question-and-answer session, so you get an opportunity to just say what you want to say. So, I just want to explain it, so he can't really answer that, but if you have a question, we can try to figure that out.
Well, okay, great. I'm trying to figure out, I've talked to several... I'm trying to figure out, I've talked to several police officers, I originally applied for a place at Town and Country, I was, I don't mean to talk loud, holy cow, but I was told I was approved, and then I believe some information was leaked from my Clearwater Beach file, I ported, and then they rescinded their offer to rent, and then I was forced to take a place at Town, not Town and Country, but Gramercy Park. Now, I've had extensive conversations with police officers, okay, Champagne Police Department, they've been in my place several times. My brother was knew and mugged, walking off the property, we were visiting. My dog was attacked, I have two service animals, a person let their dog off the leash, it came over and started to attack my dog, one of my dogs, I picked the other one up. They're service animals in Florida, I'm from Florida, it's a crime to injure a service animal, okay? I don't know anything about owner and law, but what I'm driving at, well, I'll try to be succinct, is that Gramercy Park has no business receiving money from HUD. It's dangerous, there's a lot of cultural issues there that are not resolved, and I don't feel safe. And I, and I had, I ported here with a two-bedroom voucher, okay? I had a, I was a board certified neurologist, Lisa Flaherty, who signed the paperwork in 2014 for me to have a two-bedroom voucher, and I, I, Kiar, not Kiar Blake, but, I'm having a bit of aphasia here, but anyway, I sent an email to the second-in-command of the Clearwater Housing Authority, and I asked her to transfer that paperwork down here, they've had it since 2014, so that I could port, I'm going to move to the front of the complex, to see, the police, several police officers have had to come out there, and they've all told me that it's a very dangerous place to live, okay? There was, one officer said there was a robbery within the last week, my brother was mugged, okay? A person let their dog off the leash, and attacked my service animals yesterday. And when I hear from, like, the inspector that came in, said, well, they're working on it, they're trying to improve it, they're trying to improve it, but the bottom line is, and I've sent some, I sent, I'm sorry, excuse me, I sent an email to you, and I went to you, it's dangerous, it's not safe, and I've asked to move to the front of the complex, that was per recommendations of St. Peter, St. Petersburg, forgive me, I'm from Florida, Champagne Police Department, they said it's much safer up by, what's the, okay, so I, and there are units available there, but they don't let me transfer. And the place has to be safe for you, for it to receive HUD money, correct? You're the attorney?
Again, this is your opportunity to voice your concerns.
I'm not allowed to ask you questions?
Well, I would like the opportunity to, to research and address your questions. You want to step up after the meeting, we can talk, and you can...
I'd be happy to, sure, I don't want to waste time, there's, you know, a lot of people here, but I've sent a lot of emails, and maybe some of them are random, I've had brain surgery six times, I don't walk well, and there's some predatory behavior at that complex, it's the bottom line. And I believe there's a high level of drug activity there also, between, there's a complex, there's a street between Gramercy Park, and then there's a complex behind it, and I've seen a lot of transitions of individuals late at night, when I'm, I go to church, okay? And I don't even feel safe walking through the apartment after what happened to my brother. So, and the bottom line is, if the St. Peter, oh, see, forgive me, Florida again, if the Champagne Police are clearly aware of how dangerous Gramercy Park is, sir, why isn't the Housing Authority addressing that with them to bring them into compliance? I'm not allowed to ask you que, you can't answer that, or?
Again...
I'll just take a seat, I, you know, I don't, I'm not used to this, but... Thank you. ...totally have safety issues here, excuse me.
Thank you for your comments.
Well, thank you.
Okay.
I mean, because you pump a lot of money into that property, I assume, so...
Just for the record, the Housing Authority don't own Gramercy Park, we subsidize individuals that choose to move into Gramercy Park.
But HUD's site requirement, yeah, HUD's site requirement requires it to be free from unreasonable danger, doesn't it?
We want every property to be safe, and we are aware of some issues in Gramercy Park, and I know the city isn't aware of issues also, and we're trying to work together to resolve that. There's only certain things that the Housing Authority can do because we don't own the property in Gramercy.
Refuse to fund them?
That's a, that's a long process, and I, and I...
Forgive me, but it's dangerous.
Okay, no problem.
Okay, sorry.
We need, do we need a, okay.
We do have a reason to go to closed session before discussion of hiring and firing and continuing employment of employees, discussion of probable imminent litigation, and for discussion on purchase and selling price of real property.
Need a motion to add that? Please, turn on the motion. Go into closed session, please.
I'll make a motion that we go into closed section, and with no action to be taken.
There'll be no action to be taken, but we'll be at another meeting for the annual meeting afterward.
It's a whole, it's a totally different meeting, so.
Right.
You have another meeting after?
Raise that.
Okay, we're, I make a motion, I'll give it a try, we'll make a mo, I make a motion that we go into closed section with no action to be taken, and then following that, we'll go into our annual meeting.
Are they fine? Okay. We need a second?
A second, eh?
Commissioner Chinoweth?
Yes.
Commissioner Turnbull?
Yes.
Commissioner Obachowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Henry?
Yes.
Commissioner Adair?
Yes.
Commissioner Rose?
Yes.
Commissioner Parks?
Yes.